All right, I think that's everyone in. Good evening, everyone. We are here for the August 11th zoning Board of Appeals meeting. If everyone could keep their their microphone muted and their cameras off, that would be great. We'll give you guys a chance to talk. When you're the applicant or when we open the hearing up for public comment. I think we'll start with a roll call vote and then get going. So, Mr. Faya.
Present.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Swaim.
Here.
Ms. Akers-Moore here. All right, that's great. Let's get going with 7 o'clock Lynn Wilson, who is requesting a continuance. So.
I'll move to continue the application of Lynn Wilson for a special permit under sections 5, 3, 4, and 11, 6. The zoning bylaw for the stable and boarding courses and presidential district between Cambridge Turnpike. To September 8 at 7. Haley is 7.
Haley, is that good?
Uh, yep.
At 7 o'clock.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Great, all in favor, Mr. Faya.
Hi.
Mr. Smith.
Hi.
Ms. Akers-Moore, hi. Great. All right, well, so now we're in a position where we have a few minutes. Do we want to do the 7:14 minute approval while we're waiting?
Sure.
Um, anyone, did anyone have any comments? Are we all?
Those look good.
They're good.
Fantastic. All right, so.
Move approval.
Great, all in favor, Mr. Faya.
Hi.
Mr. Smith and Ms. Akers-Moore. Oh, sorry, Ms. Akers-Moore, hi. Great. Um, I actually cannot vote on this, the 7:05 hearing, so, Jim, are you taking that one?
No, I didn't realize that, but there you go.
Just because I wasn't here last time, so I.
But neither were they.
Who wasn't here?
The 7:05, this Coburn Hill? I don't think we talked about it.
Oh, Haley, was that not the one?
That was, that was defer, I mean, it was deferred. It was like the one we just did. It was.
Oh, it was just continued?
It was just continued.
Oh, okay, um.
So it's never really open for discussion.
No, it was never known. It had zero discussion, right?
Okay.
All right, well, I show 7:03, so I'm just gonna wait till 7:05. I guess any other administrative business while we're. Anything from the board? How's everyone summer? Good?
Good.
Very nice.
Excellent. Just so everyone knows, I have to wait until 7:05 because that's the time that the hearing is legally scheduled to start or has been legally noticed, so. Haley, you have the ability to pull up the applications and everything, right, on your computer?
Yes.
Okay, great. All right, here we are, 7:05, 45 Coburn Hill. I'm not sure who is presenting.
Good evening. I'll be presenting for the applicant.
Great. You can just introduce yourself. That'd be great.
Members of the board, my name is Frederick Gilgun. I'm an attorney at the law firm Nicholson, Trader &amp; Gilgun in Lexington. I represent the applicant 44 Coburn Hill LLC. Also on this, at this meeting is the principal of the LLC, Mr. Ben Finnegan, and also the construction manager for this project, Jamie Osborne. So as you can see from the application, the applicant seeks a special permit pursuant to section 7.1.5 of the town's bylaw for the construction of a new home on a property that lacks sufficient frontage by five feet. The existing home on the property is in a state of disrepair. It has roof damage, it has decayed siding, it has water damage in the interior, and evidence of mold and mildew. The new home will be a beautifully new constructed, single-family home, tastefully designed to fit within the neighborhood. You noted that we did ask for a continuance at the July meeting, and that was because the applicant received some feedback from neighbors regarding the proposed design and location of the home. And over the past month, Mr. Finnegan has met and spoken with several of the neighbors, heard their concerns, and made modifications to both the the design style and the location of the home in an effort to accommodate the concerns that were raised. We understand that the boards, one of the boards concerned is the size of these properties when granting relief under section 7.1.5, and how it fits with the size of the homes in the neighborhood. Towards that end, we did submit a list of homes in the neighborhood with, of size that we feel are comparable to that of the home that we proposed to construct, and that we feel supports a conclusion that the home will fit with the size of the homes in the Coburn Hill neighborhood. We feel that the new home will significantly enhance the neighborhood, and certainly will not amount to a substantial detriment to the neighborhood. And because of that, we respectfully ask that the board grant the special permit pursuant to section 7.1.5. So, Mr. Finnegan, myself, Mr. Osborne are available for questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, can we just bring up the site plan?
Sure.
Thanks.
One moment.
While we're doing that, any comments from the board?
It'd be nice to see the map of what's, what are the non-conforming lots in the neighborhood.
Yeah, so generally when we consider these, we look at what the, what non-conforming lots are around to see what kind of influence we can kind of have on if the neighborhood is changing, or if it has already become, you know, that these homes are already the size. I know you gave us a list, but I think, I think you're right. Robbie would be very helpful to see that on a map. And now that I just asked you to pull up the site plan, do you happen to have the map showing the conforming lots, non-conforming lots?
Not in there.
No, you'd have to go on ahead.
It's on the, on the town website. Or something. I don't know where you get it, yeah.
I think it's on the GIS.
Oh, right.
Fair, I can go on the GIS. Sorry.
Oh, no, sorry. I'm impressed. I pulled that up quickly. Oh.
Sorry, technology is not cooperating with me for the moment. There we go.
Okay, so do we have the, the layer where you can show conforming? That, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
Do you see, is it under the zoning?
Yeah, it's probably under the zone.
Yes, yeah, that one.
Some reason it's not allowing me to click on it.
Okay.
Sorry about that. I don't know why it's.
It's not letting you click on zoning, huh?
Yeah, it's showing up as larger than, oh, no.
Oh, no. Well, let's start with this list and just take a look at where those are. When you get back into the neighborhood.
Yep.
All right, so we have 19, which looks like it's two houses down. Is 5396 square feet, 46 is.
Across the street, across the street.
Yep, and then, oh yeah, 56 is, okay. Um, all right, well, I guess we'll, we'll start with that information. Are there other comments from the board?
Well, one of the, I, one of the things I will say is somehow, which is usually not the case, I wasn't able to load up. The, the photos wouldn't load for me. I don't know if they're so big or whatever, so I don't really, didn't see that. If we have a chance to stick them on, that'd be useful.
And Haley, we did not receive any public comment, correct?
Uh, no, not on this project.
Okay.
Procedural question, and I don't mean to speak out of order. I am in a butter, and I do not know when the proper time to come is.
We will let you know when the public comments open.
Thank you.
Yep. All right, so.
I would ask the applicant, does he have to, or will he be able to maintain the trees that are currently in front?
Ben or?
Yes, Ben Finnegan, 45 Coburn Hill LLC, Finnegan Development. We do intend to maintain for the site plan the two trees that are in the front along the street. There's an.
What about the tree? It looks like there's one right up against the bushes.
The trees around the existing house are scheduled to be removed.
Tom, is that the one you're talking about right there?
Yes.
Okay. Um. We're under the far, just pointing that out. And we are 144% over the 150. I'm gonna open it up to the public unless there's another comment from Robbie, Jim, or Tom.
That's good for now.
Okay, let me go ahead and open up for public comment, so if you could raise your hand, and we will call on you. So Jane Torpey, if you could just introduce yourself and say your address for the record, that'd be great.
Jane Torpey, 55 Coburn Hill Road, Concord.
Great, go ahead.
I am most appreciative of Ben Finnegan's changes that he has made to the appearance of the house and the orientation. With that said, this house is substantially larger than any house that I'm aware of on the three adjoining streets, Coburn Hill, Adams, and Nimrod. I would be interested in knowing if this board has access to that information, the percentage of houses that have been redeveloped on these three adjoining streets that are non-conforming.
Okay, um, so what we have is this Exhibit A, which shows, which I will note, it says that these are a guesstimate of the gross floor area, so. That, that's all we have. We were trying to pull up a map showing what was non-conforming, which what could be done by right and what couldn't, and we had, we don't have that. Unless Haley, for some reason, you've figured out how to get that?
I'm working on that right now.
We're working on that right now. So according to the data that we were given, that there are a couple, that's what we were going through earlier. There were a couple of abutting lots that were larger. Well, there's one abutting that's two doors down that is a little larger than this house, and then the other ones are in the 49. They're, they're all replaced. They show Coburn Hill, Adams. Did you, I don't know if you saw this on, online, but applicants submitted something with all these similar, similarly sized houses. So I don't have any other, does anyone else have any, any other answer?
Um, so I think I figured out the map.
Oh, yeah.
One moment.
Right.
Can everybody see that?
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, so what are we looking at for?
So it looks like it's just showing.
There's usually a conforming.
Yeah, I'm not as familiar.
Yeah.
With this portion of the GIS. I'm in zoning.
Zoning labels, President A. Parcel areas, interstate. I gotta be honest, I don't know usually how Elizabeth does this, if there's.
Yeah, I apologize if Elizabeth is more familiar with this portion than I am.
Talking, um. Well, okay, well, I'll let you keep kind of fiddling with that. If, if it's, I'm gonna move on. Was there any other comment? Ms. Torpey, anything else for the moment while we're?
Um, my opinion is that this house is larger than any house that I'm aware of in these three streets, and that the majority of the houses in this neighborhood are not of that size. And so from that perspective, it is out of character.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Susan, I don't have a last name. Oh, you're muted. Hi, we can't hear you. You're. Okay. Yes.
Okay, Susan Miller, I live diagonally across the street at 56 Coburn Hill Road, which is shown incorrectly on that map that you showed. You're still showing the little, to the little tiny house that was here with a separate garage. It's now a renovated Cape with an attached two-car garage. Sorry, my dog doesn't know me. Anyway, so to add to Jane's comments, the house at 19 Coburn Hill Road is just as big. In fact, it's probably a little bigger. And I wanted to also comment that Ben has been very, very, very responsive to everybody, to all of our comments. I think the house, as it's being presented now, is a better fit for the neighborhood, but it is still bigger than anything in the neighborhood, other than, sorry, you can hear my dog crying, I'm sorry, other than the house at 19 Coburn. My only concern is that the mass of the front of the house still looks really big, if you can look at it, and it's just because the other newer houses. Let me back up. Ben included, or they included in their package some houses in Park Lane, and I don't think you can consider Park Lane at all. The lots are bigger there. At least the frontage on them is bigger. And my only concern now, because Ben did do almost everything we asked, is that because the roof line is still very straight across, it just looks bigger than some other houses that are almost as big as it. Like, there's a house at 511 Elm on the triangular lot that is the same size, 4,280 square feet, and it is, it looks significantly less big because it's got peaks and you know, different kinds of roof lines. That said, he did do a lot to try to take into account the concerns of the neighbors.
Thank you for that.
All I have to say.
Sally Bowen, I see as your screen name.
Sorry?
Oh, sorry, I'm calling on someone else. Thank you very much.
Yeah, Dan, Dan Bowen, I can see that my screen name says Sally, 19 Coburn Hill Road, the big house. Um, so I've lived in the neighborhood for 25 years. I'm one house away. And when we, we went through something similar. We lived in a small house for the first eight years. We were looking to get some more elbow room when the kids started arriving. So we tore down the old house, built a new one. We went through the same process, ZBA, and I would bet virtually every house in this neighborhood is pre-existing non-conforming because the frontage is 125 feet, as required by the zoning regulation. The reality of the, uh, the boots on the ground, most, every lot is either 120 or 100. And it, so take a look at that if you're concerned about non-conforming lots. So this one is short by five. When we presented to the ZBA, there were neighbors who expressed concern about the size of the house. I, I, I think it's, everyone has a different opinion. Our house fits in very well with this neighborhood. And from a town perspective, this is what new buyers seem to want. This is why the developer is developing this sort of thing. If I were to rewind the clock 15, 20 years, this is the type house that I'd want. It would attract a young family with kids, and that's what this neighborhood is really known for. So the, I'm a proponent as, as proposed of the Finnegan Development. I think with a little time, people are gonna think, realize that the house is just fine. It's gonna fit into the neighborhood. So for those reasons, I support it. I would also echo what Susan and Jane mentioned, that Ben Finnegan has been great. He reached out to every neighbor, has been extremely responsive. He's, and he's been building quality houses around Lexington and Concord in this surrounding area. So I consider, for those reasons, I consider ourselves lucky that they're gonna be developing here.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm looking for any other comments. I do not see any. Haley, am I missing anyone?
Uh, no, and if you guys want to look at the zoning map, I figured out the layer.
Yes.
I cracked the code.
Great.
One moment.
Sure.
There we are.
Okay.
Yeah, that's all non-conforming, right? The conforming are in white and the non-conforming are in shaded, right?
Yep, the non-conforming is orange.
Yeah.
All right, well, that.
And I think that, I think that, you know, what the last neighbor, blank, Mr. Brown, Bowen, Mr. Bowen, anyway, said was, was, I think, was a, was a good key, because I recall on the narrative, it said that when these, this neighborhood was laid out, the zoning was 120 feet, and then it got changed to 125 feet, and if that, in fact, was the case, and then all these were grandfathered. So if all that was, in fact, the case, that would explain why you have just lot after lot after lot after lot after lot. Now, you know, it is the case where you have more non-conforming lots. Rather than fewer, we certainly take the position, have taken the position that we have somewhat more control over the development of a neighborhood. If there's, you know, if there's two non-conforming lots and 25 conforming lots, all of which could easily support a house this size or larger without running into the far, then you just, then you sort of have to, in a way, you, you don't throw up your hands so much, but at least you have to wonder, you know, why am I holding this particular house to a smaller size when everybody else by right can make a bigger house? So they cut both ways in terms of the conforming, non-conforming.
Thanks, Jim. Um, I've, let me close public comment. I don't know if I did that officially. So now I've done that officially. Robbie, Tom, any? Any comments? And we can take a look if you want. We can pull up more, the different plans. I'm glad to hear the developer has been receptive to changes and that we just haven't been involved with it, so we don't know how it's, how it's evolved. I, I, are there comments from Robbie?
Haley, it's Carol Neville. I'm in my car, and I stopped. I don't know if you can see me on camera. I had, I did have one comment before you shut up.
Okay, I did not see you, but that's, that's fine. You can just introduce yourself and say your address and go ahead.
Hi, it's Carol Neville, and I'm at 46 Coburn Hill Road, directly across the street from the project. And I would echo what Susan and Jane, and also what Dan had to say about Ben being, you know, open to changing things. And I, and I agree with what Dan said about this is a, this is a family neighborhood. I mean, that's what drew us there. We have two kids, and we're excited about, you know, maybe some new kids joining the neighborhood. I guess my concern is that the way the house is situated, it's on a ridge lot, and we were hoping that the way the house could be situated, it's okay to have the square footage, but if there's some way it could be, you know, sort of laid out so that some of the square footage is hidden behind the house or angled it away so that it doesn't look so massive from the front, and the frontage doesn't look so massive, so it would look a little bit more in character with the rest of the neighborhood. That would be ideal. So, you know, I'm not in, I'm not against the size of the house. I understand why the size is needed for the amount of bedrooms, but it just doesn't, it just seems like a massive, massive-sized house on that ridge line.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Officially closing public comment again. Sorry, Robbie, were you about to say something? Sorry, Robbie, were you about to say something? And if people couldn't mute, because I'm getting feedback, thanks.
Yeah. Could I raise a question? Could they pull up a plot plan to show the location of the house that is supposed to be built?
Yep.
I can't file the plot now.
Yeah. Haley, you have that, right?
All right, I'm just searching for it now.
Robbie, you want to make your comment while we're doing that?
You know, it, it does, it does seem like an outsized house for the neighborhood. As it exists today. Uh, I, you know, it does look like there are a couple of houses that have gotten bigger. I can't tell. One of them was on a conforming lot. But I guess, you know, I'm not hearing from the neighbors that the size is so much a problem, but I think I am hearing some concerns about the massing. Which, you know, when I look at the elevations, I can see where that's coming from.
Yep.
So, yeah, I, I, I guess I'm not sold at this point, but.
Um.
Still thinking about it.
Yeah, no, I agree with you. Let's take, Tom, let's go to the plot plan, and then we can take a couple, look at elevations, and then I'm thinking that where I'm headed is a site visit, but we can talk about that in a minute. Tom, just giving you what you wanted to see.
Yes, is that the? Yes, thank you.
Um, and yeah, Haley, while we're there, let's just take a look at the elevations, so we get a sense of. Robbie, I have the same feeling. I mean, that's what I was saying. I'm very happy to hear the developer has already worked on this, so, you know, I don't want to get to the point of micromanaging something that's already been looked at a bunch, but since this is the first time we're seeing it, I think it's fair enough for us to probably take a look, take a look at the, on, on the ground. Um, all right. What's the height to, to the ridge line there?
Um, well, what, while he's the answer to that question, one of the things that the plot plan shows is that it's, it's 151, it's 150 feet.
Sorry.
Above sea level at the street, and then by the time you get to this house, it's 157. And then it keeps going. It's that big all the rest of the way. So there's no question that it sort of sits up from the road, you know, six or seven feet before you get to the.
Yep, and there you are, 33. Okay.
And the other thing that I can understand from the, from the point of view of, and I agree, we should have a site visit, is if you look at the plot plan again, you don't have to pull it up, but if you look at it, it's just, it's, it's a narrow lot, as we know, because it only has 120 feet of frontage, and this occupies a good deal. And this occupies a good deal of that lot, you know, as, as one of the neighbors indicated, it's just kind of spread throughout the lot. So again, I think people worked hard on it and that they've got us a long direction. But given the number of people who are concerned, I'm, I'm sort of up for going out and taking a look. With, you know, with this thing staked out where we can actually see where that ends of the houses, it houses, et cetera.
I think that makes a lot of sense. Robbie, that's, is that where you are too, Tom?
Yeah. I think we need a site visit.
Okay, um, so let me throw that to the applicant. So we're proposing a site visit with the corners staked out for us to see.
I assume that's okay with Ben?
Sure, we can do that to just stake out of the proposed footprint.
Yeah, is any, anything else, anyone? I'm okay with.
Something for the height of the roof, but that's the other thing we sometimes are able to get a sense of.
Um, how strongly do you feel about that? Jim, Tom? Robbie?
Well, I think it's probably the other issue here, right? It's the height and the width of it. It's the, the two things that we're hearing people concerned about, not the, not the size.
Okay.
But add to that, you know, it, if you look kind of at 19 Coburn, it's a little broken up. Where the garage isn't kind of continuous as one larger piece. So I, I think that's maybe somewhat of it too.
Yep.
Get it from the front.
Okay, so staked and however we can get the, if a balloon works on whatever day we're going or we've done it with stakes.
A pole or whatever.
Whatever gives us the sense, that's what we're going to be looking at is the massing and, and the height. Is that okay with, with you, Mr. Finnegan?
Yeah, we can do that.
Great. So question of scheduling that, should we, Haley, uh, just circle back around with the, with the poll for times on that?
Uh, yes.
Okay. Um, and I think it's up to you to, to the applicant, correct? If it's a, if the public is invited to that, we won't be discussing anything at the, there, but.
Yeah, that, that's, that's fine with me, whoever.
Already heard how accommodating you are, so.
Yeah.
That's great. Um, okay, great. So shall we continue this till our next meeting? Do you think that gives us a good amount of time? I think it's fine, okay? So we will continue it, I guess, are we 7:05 on? Whatever date our next meeting is, what is it?
September 8th, so moved.
I have a second. Great, on favor, Mr. Smith.
Hi.
Mr. Faya.
Hi.
Is a Chris Moore, I. Okay, so we'll be in touch about scheduling the site visit and then we will see you back next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much. Okay, um, we are moving on to another continuance, correct? To, uh, Corey North Road LLC. So this will be continued till 7:10, right? That's what we're at?
Yes.
Great.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Faya.
Hi.
Mr. Smith.
Hi.
Is a Chris Moore, I. Alrighty, we are at 7:15, Michael Karucci.
Yes, hi, this is Elise Stone. I'm here representing the applicants, my, Mr. Karucci and Dr. Marrero.
Hey, go ahead.
Hi, how are you doing?
Good, thanks, how are you?
Good, thanks. So I'll start, so 309 Garfield Road was originally the guest house of 317 Garfield Road. So it was separated out as it is its own lot in the past year. And it now consists of the guest house, a single family residence. The lot is 21,886 square feet. The living area of the residence is 1380. So the, um, if, could you possibly put the site plan up? Because that's really.
Chair, one moment.
Sure. So while she's doing that, you'll see on the site plan that the driveway road, there's a road that goes through, kind of cuts the property, this new lot in half. And it goes down where there's some other houses at the end of the road. So the current house is nonconforming and you'll see this on the site plan or you might have it in front of you. So when they created this lot, um, they have those two lines that you see kind of start the front setback. So what happened is the front of the house, the guest house, is nonconforming with the front setback. So the required in this area is 40 feet and right now it's 8.7 feet from that driveway. But you see the, their entire property in the darker line surrounding it. So this project is to build a two-car garage with a room above it. And it's sitting across the street. You see it across from the existing driveway of that guest house. And so similar, this is going to be nonconforming with the setback, but it's setback nine feet. So it's not, you know, we're not increasing the nonconformity. If you, I don't know if any of you had a chance to drive down the road to see this, but there were a few restrictions in terms of where we could put the garage. You see the septic was already put in before, you know, while, while they were creating this lot before they bought it. So we had to stay, um, you know, a distance from that leaching field that you see down lower right. And also there's a, it, it's kind of goes down a hill. And the garage really, you know, had to line up with the driveway. So that kind of determined the kind of location of this garage. So in doing this, so that's our nonconformity is the frontage. We're way under the FAR. The FAR for this lot is 6,452 square feet. And the garage combined with the existing house, we're at 2597. So we're about, you know, a third, I mean, just under a half of what the FAR would be allowed. Now, the other part is the 50% rule, as you know, with the nonconformity. So the 50% of the 1380 is 2,070. So we are over that number by 527 square feet. So, you know, those are the two points. I just want to mention also that we were in front of the historical commission, um, earlier tonight. And they approved this project. They liked the fact that we were, you know, nothing was going to interfere with how that existing guest house looks now. So we were staying away from it, but the architecture was, um, we were still in keeping with the general architecture of, you know, by using the same materials, stucco, the same windows, et cetera. So, um, they, they did approve the project. So.
Thank you. Um, I'm very familiar with this lot. I was on the board when we approved separating it. So the issues with the nonconformity, I think, I mean, we're, we're talking as if it's a normal lot. It's, it's not, I mean, this was really a special concession in order to have the house not be torn down. It was allowed that this lot was give, allowed to be created with historic restrictions put on it. Great that the historical commission approved it. My reading of the, the historic preservation plan is that the town needs to approve this and that the parties to the town is a select board. If you look under section two, garages, sheds, outbuildings, shall, shall be subject to the approval of the town prior to construction. I'm not, I mean, I'm not saying there's going to be any issue with it, but I do not personally think that it is. I think that the parties to this agreement need to agree that it's okay before we go ahead and issue a special permit for it. That's where I am with that. Haven't, haven't spoken to the rest of the board yet. I don't even think it's really our purview to decide whether, because this is all historical. I, I understand what you're saying about the historical commission, but, but again, I would think that that would have to be the select board who agreed to it.
So you know why, we went and spoke with Elizabeth Hughes and Marcia's aware of this as well. Because when we first got the project, I, you went right to the building inspector to ask what he thought and he talked extensively with them before, you know, we came before you and then, and the historical commission. So, I mean, I guess I'm a little surprised because they didn't mention anything about that.
Well, again, I'm having this conversation for the first time. I haven't talked to my board members, but this is the reading I'm having of this, of, of this agreement. So talking about, again, to me, I'm not as interested about the nonconformity in this lot because it's a very specific lot that's created with very specific restrictions on it for very specific reasons. If the historical commission says yes, I mean, chances are the select board's not going to have an issue with it. But I guess I don't feel right being the person who approves it before it's like, you know, officially approved under that historic preservation plan. But I'm open to other thoughts of the board members.
I mean, I, I guess I'm just, again, I'm a little surprised because I thought Marcia kind of ran the hall department and this was never brought up.
Was never brought up to, I mean, this is, this is the first conversation we're having about it because I was never talked to about it. So this is, this is it. I mean, again, the board could tell me that they totally disagree with that reading. But Marcia, I, I have no, Haley, I have nothing from Marcia, I have nothing. We, I mean, we, in all honesty, we don't have anything from the historical commission either.
Well, it just happened at seven tonight.
Right, right.
Right, yeah.
I have done one or two of those in the past and I think I agree with your analysis. That if you're going to amend one of those, you've got to get, go back and get an amendment via the authority, which would, I think you're correct here, it's probably the selectment.
Is, but is it an amendment? You know, in the, in the.
No, but it's.
I don't know, I mean, honestly, I don't know. I, I don't think, first, let's assume it's not an amendment. It still says, as Elizabeth said, that it's subject to the approval, subject to the approval of the town prior to construction, which approval shall not be unreasonably withheld or delayed. I suppose that you could say, Elizabeth, to your point, that its approval is subject to approval of the town prior to construction means that we could grant a conditional approval of which part of the condition would be to get the, get the approval of the town. So that might allow us to, to get there if we wanted to. But the, the other question here, which again, I would leave up to the town and not to this board, given the nature of this, is that it says it's a garage shed or outbuilding. And, you know, I know what a garage is and I know what a shed is and I'm not sure what an outbuilding is, but this has an office and a bathroom and a, and a, a lot of other things. And it doesn't have a kitchen. I don't think it's a second unit. But honestly, I haven't researched and don't know the question about whether or not if you say it's a garage, but then it has living space in it. If that means it's still a garage or it's living space with a garage, in which case it's may or may not be an outbuild. It's certainly an outbuilding, but is it an outbuilding that counts? So I'm, I'm, I was concerned with this section based on the question that I wasn't 100% sure. If the fact that there's actually living space here alters the question about two. So I would be, you know, I think it's a good idea, subject to what we, comments we might have from the public. I think it's a good idea, I think it's a good plan. But I would suggest that we don't have the full authority to get it all the way to where it gets. So that we either have to defer to the town or we have to conditionally approve it with a condition being that they would have to satisfy section two and get the approval of the town.
Jim, I would also note, uh, I don't know if it's helpful or not, but I did talk with Elizabeth because I was concerned about it being deemed a living unit. And she pointed out that under 16, uh, 136 and 137, this as shown on the plans at least is not a dwelling or a dwelling unit.
Right.
And so, yeah, we may want to make it as a condition that it not be converted to a dwelling unit as defined in the code.
Right. No, I don't think it's a dwelling unit because of those definitions, but it definitely is living space. And that just, again, you know, if you, if you ask the normal person on the street, what's a garage, what's a shed? And what's an outbuilding? You wouldn't necessarily get a uniform view that it's something where somebody's got an office and a, and a shower and a bathroom and a.
Yeah. And I think the issue I have with conditionally approving it is that it speaks to how big it can be and what it can be, that what the historic restriction is supposed to do. And that's not our purview. So if the town, so I, I think that if we're saying, yes, you can have it as long as the town says, okay, then we're saying, yeah, it's okay historically. And it fits in with the whole site, but it, we really shouldn't even be saying that. Maybe the 500 extras.
Oh, I see what you're saying, you're saying, you're saying the special permit is all about, does it fit into the neighborhood? And that's the question of the historic issue, right?
And, and this, in this case, the neighborhood is a very specific, these two lots based on the historic plan, preservation plan. So, I, I mean, I'm sorry, it's a surprise, but I don't, I don't think it's going to be a major impediment to this. But I do think that the correct procedure would be the town and then us. And the town can listen to what the historical commission says. I mean, that's more, again, in their purview than it would be for ours.
Okay, so I, I guess I'll just give Marcia a call tomorrow and see how to go about that.
Um, yeah.
I've never, I've never presented, yeah, I've never presented an architecture project to the select board.
Again, this is a really specific case. So that's why when we're, I, I don't think we can just talk about frontage and fitting in the neighborhood and everything outside of this agreement. And this is not our agreement, this is with the town.
So I guess this is my only question. So we go in front of the select board now, you know, they know nothing about site, history, et cetera, you know? There, that's not their expertise.
So they might say, what does the historical commission say? You know?
So we went in front of the historic commission, they passed it. I, I guess that's, I guess I'm a little flummoxed here because.
Well, I mean, I mean, Ms. Stone, I think you can be flummoxed, but the simple fact is, is that whether they know enough about it or not to do it, they're going to have to inform themselves for it because right now it says the town has to approve it. So we're not the town for this purpose. And so somebody's going to have to sort it out, I think, but we're not the town for this purpose. So I'm sure that the select board has the capability of figuring out how to think about this particular issue and talk to various people. But this board is also not going to be able to tell you exactly how they're going to go about it. I agree with that.
So, um, if we go now to the select board, do we still then have to come back here for the nonconformity? I mean, could you?
I think they, I think that's correct. I say, I think it's.
Telemedicine or.
Could you pass the nonconformity now?
Hold on one second, sorry. No, I think what we're saying is that to pass a nonconformity, we'd have to say, make findings that we find that this is in keeping with the neighborhood and the surroundings. And that is not our call because this is not, because there's a very specific plan, which frankly, when you bought this lot, you knew this was a tough lot. I mean, that there is an extra step here. Like I said, I don't think it's going to, I don't think any of us are saying this is an awful plan and we want to prove it. I just think we're saying that procedurally, you need to get approval from the town, come back to us and get the special permit to build it.
No, no, I, I understand what you're saying. I guess it's just, you know, we went through all the proper procedures you do with the lot, talking to the planning department and getting all that stuff and.
Not a nor, again, there's a whole nother document here that make, that takes it out of the realm. And that's why this lot was allowed to be created, is that it was put under a specific section of the bylaw and subject to a different agreement. This isn't just a run of the mill lot or else this wouldn't exist, so.
No, no, when, when we went, you know, Elizabeth printed the whole document out of which we read it and that. And so when I had this discussion with her just this week, she said that, um.
Okay, Ms. Stone, Ms. Stone, honestly, you're, you're, you're basically saying, I did, I did everything I thought I was supposed to do, so I don't understand why you can't just do it. And we've told you that we don't think that we have the legal right to do it. So we can't really help you. We've heard your point. I've, I've heard your point. You feel like you didn't necessarily get all the proper advice you should have gotten. That's your opinion. I think this is a tough lot. I, you know, I think, I don't know that we have a lot more to discuss about that point.
Okay.
I hear you, we'll deal with it as quickly as we can, as soon as you've got that town approval.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Um, so I guess, let me, are there comments from the board? I'll open for public comment, that makes sense until we.
And would we get a continuance or would I reapply?
No, we give you a continuance. I'd give her a continuance.
Yeah, that's, um, so. Let me go ahead and open for public comment. We did get one letter. I don't know if those people are here to speak, but is there anyone here to speak? Okay. There is not. The one letter we did get was in, was concerned about this proposal. And again, I just, I feel like we we can talk about it, but I don't really feel like we're in a position to talk about it yet because we don't know whether it fits into the larger historic preservation plan. I'm going to close public comment. Don't see any, any other comments from the board, or do we want to go ahead and continue this? And do we think it should be a month, two months?
Well, I think that we can, I mean, my view is that we should have continued it for a month on the theory that. We may. You know, with further consideration from Marcia and others, somebody may have a different view, and so I don't want to. Hold these people up if there is a way that they can resolve it within that period of time. Um, and then we give, we can't, we can just do a further continuance is, is my view. No, no reason. I mean, I wouldn't, I'd hate to continue it for two months and then.
Yeah.
Have Ms. Stone say, well, have Elizabeth come back and say, well, I've had conversations with the select board and. Town council and, and Ms. Stone and a bunch of others, you know, during the course of this last three days, and. We're all set to have you do this on the September eighth, and then suddenly that. Their hearing is in October, so we might as well.
That's fine. That's fine, so.
So I'd move to continue it to September eighth at seven, ten.
Seven, oh, I think we're at seven fifteen, seven twenty.
Seven fifteen, seven fifteen.
Yeah, thank you.
Do I have a second?
Yeah, second.
Mr. Smith.
Hi.
Mr. Faye.
Right.
Is a curse more I. Alrighty, thank you very much. We'll see you next month. Um, and now moving on to seven twenty Dickinson Architects. Who is presenting?
Yeah, Bill Dickinson from Dickinson Architects in Concord, so I'll be presenting. And the owners of Brian Burton, Christine Scherer are here also, but. Yeah, so again, I'm Bill Dickinson, Dickinson Architects, and Brian and Christina are the owners of ninety seven Highland. Now ninety nine, ninety seven Highland is a condominium building. And is a conforming structure, but is already over the FAR by eight hundred and ninety five. Square feet due to not, due to the nonconforming lot size. Ten thousand square feet is required in their zoning district and they have eight thousand six hundred and seventy three. They're looking to add a hundred and thirteen square feet kitchen addition with a deck, and that will be added within the allowable setbacks. Um, also, we're looking at. Also, they have an existing nonconforming four by eight shed that will be relocated. Within a few feet to the west and will maintain the thirteen point one setback. I think Brian and Christine would like to comment a little about the, the need of their project to increase the FAR.
Sure.
Hello, this is Brian Burton, ninety seven Highland Street. And our, our building was built in eighteen ninety six and the kitchen is. Very small. And we're just asking to build a small addition where our current deck is off the back of the house, and we think it fits. Mr. Dickinson's design fits in with the current character of the building and the current character of the neighborhood and.
It will make the building, the kitchen more usable. Sorry, this is Christina Scherer, ninety seven Highland.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll be getting more space, a little bit more space and a little bit more of an open, we'll plan into the dining room so that we'll be able to. Have family over and be able to entertain better because right now we're pretty cramped.
Uh, can we just pull up the floor plans?
Um, I can take you on a tour through the photos in the floor plans, or if you want to just see the floor, I can screen share unless some Haley would like to.
Mr. Dickinson, if you want to go ahead and share, I mean.
Okay, sure.
Haley's been doing a lot of heavy lifting in this meeting.
Yeah.
Mr. Dickinson, while you're doing that, I mean, it'd be useful just for me, just beginning to, to know what the current area is of the kitchen. Is the current.
Um. You know, I will go to the, I don't know if I have the floor, I pulled the floor plans up, hang on. Where is the screen? Okay, there's the. Actually, Haley, can you pull up the floor, the?
Sorry, Haley.
I don't seem to be able to do a.
No worries.
Open that up.
One second. Can everybody see that?
Yeah.
Bigger at all? Sure, yeah.
There we go. So, if you could, Haley, if you could zoom in on this area, maybe, but. In the lower right, you can see the kitchen area and it's approximately ten by ten. Left side and. And you can see the kitchen island.
Right.
In that area, and there's a small mudroom to the left and the dining room to the right. But it's, it's a pretty small kitchen. It's, it's a one, maybe two-person kitchen, very hard to entertain and. Um, or even have many, multiple families in. So if, Haley, if you go to the left and up, we'll look at the proposed. Perfect. So you see the, the island in the kitchen has been expanded and there's a horizontal dotted line. That's the edge of the existing wall. And we're bumping out about six feet in alignment with the back of the building and the side of the building to create a little. Adding some windows and some cabinets along that wall and creating a good path between the large mudroom. And the dining room. We're also opening, being able to open up a large opening between the dining and the kitchen. So that guests can sit or family can sit, so the kitchen isn't isolated from the dining room. And just much more functional mudroom and just a much more multi-person functional kitchen for this tight house.
Haley, do you mind, can we just scroll back so we can see both at the same time? Just reduce that. Sure. Even though I'm going to have to squint a lot, but, okay, so there's the deck.
Yeah, so the addition's a hundred and thirteen.
Okay.
Square feet. Maybe the kitchen's a hundred and twenty.
What was the last comment you made? I just didn't hear you say.
Oh, sorry. I think the, the addition itself is a hundred and thirteen square feet. I believe the kitchen's about a hundred and twenty square feet, the existing.
Just for our analysis, did you look at other options of, of how this can be positioned without this expansion?
Oh, yeah, there's, there's no. If we go to, there's really nowhere else to bump out. Or, or add on, or reconfigure in that this is the living. Floor, when there's a living room, a dining room and a kitchen and a hallway, and that's all there is. We go to the site and so bumping out in any direction. Or you can't really add more for functional square feet without really bumping out. It's just such a small and tight kitchen. If we go to the site plan, one up that may help show how it's oriented on the site. Haley, okay, um, and if you could zoom in on the right-hand side plan.
Yep.
Great. So the, the. Brian and Christina's unit is on the right, and you can see the, on the lower right side, there's a rectangle, which is the proposed addition. And it is in alignment with the side. Of the house and the back of the house, so we're not projecting out. In fact, when I show you photos, you'll be able to see that the, the bay in front of it really obscures its view from the street. Then to the right of that addition, there is a deck, they have an existing deck, but this is a deck that comes out to the dotted line, which is the setbacks. We have an existing driveway that's pulled in. The back of the house is right on the setbacks. So there's really almost no other functional place to put an addition. I really do think an addition's necessary to. Make the kitchen as a, of kind of a modern size and connect it to the other rooms so that they can better entertain family and friends.
Is, is the, I, I know this is irrelevant to this plan, but I'm just trying to get ideas. Is the upstairs then sort of? I'm guessing it's sort of two bedrooms and a bath, or what's the?
Yes.
Yeah.
Brian and Christine, maybe you, you answer that more precisely.
Uh, there's actually three, there's three floors in the house, so. Floor is currently three bedrooms and a bath and a laundry room, and then the, the, the third floor is a former attic. That's the, the owners or the, the large bedroom that also.
Honor suite.
That also has a bathroom, so that was part of a renovation that was done, I think, in two thousand and five or two thousand and six.
Oh, cool. I mean, I think that, yeah, I think the question, you know, just to put a more precise thing on, you probably answered it, is. Anything you would do to bump out here, right, is going to increase the bar problem, so.
Yes.
The only real question is whether you have alternatives. Within the structure of the house. And, you know, absent. I guess. I mean, the only one I could even imagine here, just looking at it, is to. Essentially tear out the walls in the. In the dining room and sort of try to, I, I don't even know what, I have no idea what would work or not, but whether you somehow could combine the, the dining room and the kitchen.
Yeah.
Into a function, otherwise, otherwise it seems like you've got a, not a very large living room and. You know, wh- what else are you going to do there? It gets to be the real question.
I, I, I think you hit the nail on the head. There just isn't enough square footage in the existing footprint to, oh, you know, to open it up. People live in their kitchens now and multiple, and that's where you entertain, and their, their kitchen is just inadequate for that. Um, and we're also opening it up to the dining room, which again, they're trying to make the best of a small footprint and. It's a big house with three levels, but a very small kind of living floor. So we're trying to add to that.
Yeah. Other, other comments from the board?
I would note two things. One, there are several letters in support. And secondly, isn't this similar to what you decided on the property on Central Street recently? Where the small house, they wanted to add, I think it's close to about a hundred and thirteen square feet at the rear. Want to increase the size of their kitchen. Isn't this somewhat similar to that concept of that issue?
Yeah, I think it is, Tom, and it has the same question, which is because of the way that this. This, this particular section is written. We not only have to, you know, deal with, is it in keeping with the neighborhood, but is that, is there any other alternative? You know, if you looked at all the other alternatives, that there's no feasible way to, to accomplish the, the job, so. And I'm sorry, I'm not. I think I lost my place in the book about where, what the, what I'm reading, but something like that.
But, yeah, that makes sense.
What's, what's the, it's six point something.
Six, two, thirteen.
Yeah, six, two, thirteen, thank you. So I think it, I think you're absolutely right, Tom. I think that six, two, thirteen is. Is this, this, it borrows language unfortunately from the variance, which is always, as you know, supposed to be hard to get. And so it's this language that says that the board has to find that a literal application of this requirement would be unreasonable because there's no reasonable alternatives available. And the, and that the desired relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the neighborhood. So I think that. We haven't heard public comment yet, but I think that, you know, the letters suggest that there's no substantial detriment to the neighborhood. Um, I think it's certainly in keeping with this street. I think that it's a thoughtful design in the sense that it's really kept the. Uh, thing within the, within the building, and the question is, is there a, you know. A, that imposing the requirement would be unreasonable because there's no reasonable alternatives available, and I think. You know, if this was an expansion to do a. You know, a hangout area for teenagers. You could ask the question about whether a house needed a hangout area for teenagers, or where they could put it in the third floor, or whatever they could do. The question here is, is it reasonable to think that a house should be able? The, what is essentially this size with the two floors, the, the three floors and all that is a set, is able to, should be able to function with a, with a. You know, what for two thousand and twenty-two is a small, extremely small kitchen.
Um, yeah, well put. Um, let, let me open up to public comment. Is there anyone who would like to speak? Okay, I don't see anyone. I am going to close public comment. Yeah, I totally agree. I. This section bugs me because this is, to me, is a non-issue, and of course, we should grant this, and then you were up against that language that. Says, are there reasonable alternatives to which you could say, sure, don't build it. But I think that that's reasonable. You just can't build a bigger kitchen, but I think in this case, I like what you said, Jim, that the, is it reasonable? Within modern living of a, of a reasonable-sized kitchen, is that outside of the realm of what we should allow? No, I think, I think this is fine. I support it.
I, I had one quick question. You mentioned that the shed was going to be moved. It, it's still gonna be five feet away from the. The property line.
Yes, yeah, it's, it's, we're basically moving about two feet to the left. It's got a thirteen point one. Uh, foot setback and it's maintaining its thirteen point one foot setback. It's just shifting a couple of feet to the left.
Okay. Uh, because it does seem like a tight lot, so I just want to make sure that wasn't something else we need to give relief for. But I, I, I also agree, you know, I think it's a very modest addition to a house that's been there for over a hundred years and. You know, I, I, I do think you could argue it's unreasonable to say you can't do anything to that hundred-plus-year-old house. Uh, to bring it to the modern era, so I, I'm in support of this as well.
Great. Can I get a motion?
Sure, I'm, I'll take it on. So I would move that we grant a special permit to Dickinson Architects LLC. Uh, under section six point two point thirteen, seven point one point two, seven point one point three, eleven point six of the zoning bylaws. Construct a one hundred and thirteen square foot addition to ninety seven Highline Street. Highland, excuse me, street on a legally nonconforming lot that exceeds a floor area ratio with the addition. Increasing the nonconformity for the floor area ratio. Uh, by, by that one hundred and thirteen feet, and in particular, make findings under section six point. Uh, gotta find again, six point two point fourteen. That denying the permit in this case would be. That the literal application of this requirement to this would, would actually be unreasonable because there's no reasonable alternatives available. Uh, to construct a kitchen that. Is in keeping with. The size of the house and the. And the sort of modern use of kitchens. And, and that the desired relief. Is otherwise not in substantial detriment to the neighborhood as evidenced by the. Letters in support and the fact that the. Addition itself is, is essentially tucked into the house. Um, and then to bake the other conditions that we normally have associated with. The various conditions, standard conditions that we have associated with such permits.
Right.
Uh, I second, and you know, I, I think I'll also just add that. You know, the intended purpose of the bylaw, I don't think, was to stop a, you know, two-family. House from getting a little bitter, uh, that. House from getting a little bitter uh that it's been there for that long.
Agreed.
Second.
Agree as well.
Agreed.
Great, all in favor, Mr. Smith?
Hi.
Mr. Faye.
Hi.
Ms. Acre's more I. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you so much. Appreciate your time.
Great, thank you. Have a great night.
You too.
And and Tom Swaim, to your point, I I'll just say that this is exactly like that Central Street situation for exactly the same issue. It was. You know, I think this, the the bylaw has a really good purpose and a really good intent, but it. It falls, it it make, it has difficulty in dealing with certain parts of town like Highland Street, like Central Street. Where the houses, the character of those neighborhoods are large houses, uh, larger houses on relatively small lots where they. Were a house that you you would look at that character and say, that's been that character of that neighborhood for a hundred years with those kind of sized houses and those kind of sized lots. And that's not what we were worried about with an anti-mansionization by law, and I and I agree with Elizabeth that. You know, putting this language that comes directly out of the variance, it just. You know, the standard notion that variances are a lot harder to get than special permits. It just makes it seem like this is a lot just to be a lot harder to get.
Yep.
Could I ask a question that doesn't relate to any particular hearing, but in general. When I see us granting an application, in this case to Mr. Dickinson, the architect. Has everybody any discussion whether application, whether permits ought to be granted to the property owners? Even though they're not the applicant on the form? Because I'm thinking when they go to sell the property and they got a title exam. Uh, somewhere it'll show up in due course, but not as easily. I'm just curious whether that's been discussed.
Always thought that too, Tom, that it seems strange that anyone can be an applicant if they don't, but we I don't think we've we've never discussed it.
I mean, when before you were on Elizabeth, um, John discussed it some. Um. And, uh, you know. The property lawyer in him, but I think that um. It's I it I've always just been told this is kind of what happens, so I don't know that apparently it doesn't cause a problem. Because if it caused a prob- I mean, I guess I've always thought that if it caused a problem, it would have been fixed a long time before you and I got on the board.
Yeah, I mean, practically speaking, someone's not gonna come in and apply for something and build something on someone's property that property owners doesn't know anything about, you know, I mean, practically speaking, I guess it doesn't really. Matter. I can't see a way, Tom, where would actually someone would say, well, that piece of paper says that applicant name, so we're not gonna finance this.
Well, you have more confidence in lawyers than I do.
I don't have any confidence.
See someone be very unpleasant.
Not to have confidence in lawyers, geez.
No, 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 you've got to have confidence in real estate lawyers.
I have more confidence in real estate lawyers than some other lawyers, if that matters.
Even worse.
I shall not press my point at this point at this moment.
Yeah. Just don't try to apply for someone else's property for something that they didn't agree to. Um, I think we did everything, right? We're in good shape. All right. Thank you so much, Haley. I know that was asking a lot on the fly there, so um thanks for figuring that out. Thanks.
But now you know how to do it.
Yeah, I do. We asked for that one a lot, so.
Yeah, good. Now I I was using the wrong GIS, so now I know.
That's awesome.
And add add to your resume, add to your resume skills is the ability to deal with a GIS.
You don't want her to put her resume out there. Stop.
Well, that's true. No, no, I I appreciate that.
Um, all right. Thank you very much, everyone, and I'll see you uh next month.
And do we do we need to move to adjourn?
We don't.
We don't.
Oh, okay.
The chair, the chair can adjourn us.
I adjourn.
Alrighty.
Break the quorum.
Okay, all right, bye.
Bye bye.